Welcome everybody to June 20, 2023 work session of EMA update and ISO ratings. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved chairman.
Second.
Don't play right.
Uh huh.
Don, we appreciate your hard work. I wish we had a big audience here. It's uh, we got everybody, I'm sure we got a lot of people watching online.
There's probably a few out there.
Yeah.
That's sir.
We should come up here so they can see your place.
I'd be glad to.
Make sure your mic's on with it.
There's probably a few things that I need to address first before we get anywhere. I want to make sure that we had the right abbreviations correct when we were talking about EMD dispatching. The EMD dispatching is for medical only. I really didn't realize until I watched this thing over again that that's incorrect. EMD is only for the medical part. If somebody calls in 911, hey, I've got somebody that's unconscious. Then then you can go to whatever you have engaged, whether it's an EMD card separator, whatever. That could be. The dispatcher can use that right then and there and 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 go through the motions of even starting CPR and continuing CPR. And remaining on the telephone until the emergency has been either a rescuer that's on scene or ambulance or law enforcement, whoever. To not disconnect. That's that I I think that the more and more that I watched it and replayed it once or twice that. I gotta think like you guys are thinking. I know what I'm saying, but we want to make sure that you guys are okay with that. EMD is nothing but for medical. It's like a medical protocol. Are they breathing? Can you feel the pulse? Yada, yada, yada. Then you go to the next play, next play, next play. And they can render all kinds of good maneuvers and suggestions that that could save a life. I wanted to make sure that has nothing to do with fire. It's just straight 911. That's it. But it's it's on the medical line. Now, I know that 911 can transfer a call at any time to the medical center where they can EMD their paramedics. All of everybody at the medical center is certified EMD people. They had to be to be hired. And so that's I wanted to make sure that that's I didn't want to step way out of line on that. That's that's what's going with that.
I think Sam, did we get briefly into the classes that fell away on the EMD? I think our class was short. I think they started on that EMD also as far as, you know, about the ISO that was on the medical side.
Yeah, so it has nothing to do with ISO.
No, not at all. Not at all.
It's only on response times for emergency medical.
Not really response times. They don't count the response time on for the fire end.
Right.
I don't know how they differentiate.
Yeah, maybe I misspoke. I guess what what my my comment was having somebody on the phone that can determine whether that's a a real 911 emergency or if it's a you need to take him to the doctor Monday when you get a get an appointment, not. We don't need to send an ambulance right now for, you know, I I got a splinter in my thumb, you know, which is basically what I'm hearing a lot of.
The morning after the meeting, the last meeting that we had, I I called Rebecca. She's the the new director for 911. And I got to go in and see her immediately. And that was that was a good thing because he was she was showing me some things that I didn't know about the system itself. There's embedded protocols within when there's like a fire call or something like that. You know, that sort of really you're not supposed to have pens or anything. It's all this right here. And taking taking notes every whatever they're saying, whatever. Of course, it's being recorded, but they can go to another page. It's where's the fire located? Yada, 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 just whatever questions. That's the protocol for the fire calls, and it shows which stations to go to, the closest station, the next station, and then the third third station. And I thought that that was real valuable. It's a lot quicker than it used to be, a lot quicker before we were raided the last time. But that doesn't matter now. We're looking forward. The future is 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 what I'm keying on. I can't change things what was three or four years ago. I can't. I don't know what happened. I know I wasn't there. I was out in the field flushing hydrants with the the inspector. So I I don't know. I don't know if they asked the magic question, can I see your protocols? I have no idea. How it was answered. You got to remember, the chief was sick at the time. She was in charge of the 911. I don't want to look back and try to figure out what we did wrong. It's what we can do to get this thing kicking. And after looking at the whole gamut of our the the last report that we had, we didn't do so bad on dispatching. And I realize that. I got a message from city firemen, city chief. I guess he had watched it too at a later time. He goes, Don, we scored 100. Why didn't y'all get 100?
I was gonna ask that question, Don, because there was a lot of we spent a lot of time in that last, and that's the reason I made the comment during the meeting.
Yeah.
We could spend four to six hours on this ISO topic.
Yeah.
Because the city ISO audit was a period of time prior to the counties, and they got full credit. And now we've even added, I think it was in '21, we spent around three quarters of a million dollars on the updated consoles and the whole GPS and the tire truck.
Right. Have we got the date on that? Because I what I think commissioner is is it may have been the difference between the CAD system and the CAD system that's in there.
I'm looking at the city sheet right now, and the only thing the city didn't get, don't quote me on it, but it's the GIS is the only thing the city did not get points on. They got 85 out of 100 points in that 25 for basic 911 enhanced. 911 wireless, they got 25. It's it's a whole, we got 85 out of 100 on the city's end. So I don't know something we kind of got off on the.
Don't know. Like I said, I wasn't there.
And now we have even a better county, you know, sheriff's office is very, very, very good system at that agency.
That's the only thing that I could.
I don't know where the disconnect was in in the county's ISO.
Exactly. Not with that anyway. I don't. I'm going back to the dispatch points.
Hey, just. So Don, when when is our next opportunity for an ISO?
Um, all you gotta do is pick up the phone and ask for a formal. Now, it's it's up to them to give you a a date. Now, usually when you're I don't let them send a letter to me saying they want to come. You it's it's you're better off to saying on a regular basis, three or four years down the road, go ahead and do a re 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 evaluation.
If I guess my point would be from this meeting, we are identifying where what it takes to fix these points. And I'm, you know, when we talk about dispatch circuits, John made a good point. We spent $700, something thousand for a software with the intent that that would help ISO.
And the hardware and all the trucks too.
Right, and we got a less, we got a 43% of, you know.
Where are you looking at that, Sam?
1.3 out of total available three.
Is that on page 23? Okay, all right, I got you. I got you.
Top one third line, we got 1.3 out of three. About 43%.
Yeah, the credit for. All right, so I'm looking at 23, and I'm looking at item 414. Is that what you're looking at?
No, 432.
Gotcha. All right, I see now. Credit for dispatch circuits. I'm not, see, I don't know what what a circuit is all about.
It's a very complex matrix of what they formulate this with. I mean, we may get all eight, whatever, 100 points, but it's still gonna give us, it's gonna break it down.
Gotcha.
But I guess my point is if it's part of the ISO rating, we need to know what.
Yes, I I agree with that.
Anything but help.
And the I still think that this comes with the new CAD system and these new circuits that we spent, it was almost a million dollars. And I think that that was the difference between when we were raided versus the city rate. I don't know. I don't know that for certain, but that's the only thing that I know that was different.
Water is gonna be one of our biggest concerns in the county of being able to maintain that fire flow. Because, you know, on a perfect day scenario, we have a house fire somewhere. You want a Class A engine pull in first, do the initial attack, and then you've got to have a rotation of trucks supplying water where in the areas where there's no hydrants.
Continuous.
You got to have a continuous flow of water. I mean, we've had some bad house fires in the county, and we have to wait on water at times. But if your hydrant's not available, we need a fleet of tankers rotating.
I agree with that.
And that's, you know.
I agree with that. We're working on that for sure. Hopefully more in the future. But like I said, we could probably talk on this for the next six hours and and said what's hindsight and and what we did wrong. I I think that reaching out for what we need to do is what we've been doing since the day that I've got this letter. The points that were low, we know that there was some in the, not much on communications. I think we hit overall 7.55 out of 10. It's not bad, but we need a 10 to reach where we want to go to a four, but from training, that's not pushing somebody out, but I was eagerly to replace somebody with a premium trainer. And I did so within a year. And I'm proud of what we got now. He's he's on the ball, and we've even bought the the new the new program that helps us study when you can't be out there at the station that night doing the studies.
So you think we'll get a nine on that the next time?
A nine?
Yeah.
What do we score?
2.41.
We could. It's there's nothing on here that we can't reach if we really try, try, try.
Okay, so that problem's been solved. Credit for company personnel, 571.
Now, credit for people is a whole different story.
How many people do we need? I know you went through the the math the last time. Just give me the the number of people.
The as soon as we engage our two or our three, that's around the clock, which is nine full-time people. It's gonna give us tremendous help, but you got to still remember that those three volunteers equal one full-time person when it comes to ISO. They when they come and evaluate us, they evaluate with no blinders. It's you're like a full-time fire department, and it doesn't matter. Nothing matters because you volunteer. It doesn't matter. You're still scored a different way. So if it says we got to have a pumper on scene at this house fire, the first one in, you've got to have four people on that engine. Well, if we got one guy or one woman driving that, which is a paid person, that first one, you're gonna have to have six volunteers to follow. No, nine. Nine, sorry. I me and you went to the same school, brother. Yeah. Nine, yeah, I know. That's the truth. And that's nine people. So you're looking at 10 people boots on the ground right there.
Get that many normally when you when the call goes out?
We get a handful.
Handful or two handfuls? There's two handfuls.
Um. On the average, we're probably around 13 or 14 folks on the scene of working structure. But you got to remember, we've got two or three engines on on the scene. And whatever support vehicles we've got with water, okay? So for each wagon, each pumper that's there, you're thinking of you got to have four people per vehicle. So when they look at your paperwork, and it says, okay, engine 101 went, 102 went, 103. So let's count how many people we needed. Well, we got three full-time people. And the rest we're gonna need as in volunteer. So for each one, you got nine for each wagon. So that's over 20.
So if the fire didn't require three, but we sent three trucks out there, we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
But ISO, it's essential we send three engine companies.
Okay, so that's a requirement from ISO.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, I was just making sure that that's what we need to do.
You agree with that, John?
If you have a working structure, you know, if you have a kitchen, let's just use a basic kitchen fire.
Yeah.
You're gonna need all all you can because it can quickly get in that attic, run the whole house before you know it. But yes, three engine companies. People don't need to sit at the house. Well, I'm just gonna listen to it a few minutes. No, they need to head on.
Yeah.
Because it can quickly turn.
It's all hands. You got a volunteer department, you got to go. Everybody's.
Yeah.
Right, so you got to remember, they're they're great in us just like a paid, just like they do Macon, like they do in Milledgeville. It's no difference.
Fire doesn't care. You can have a, I'm friends with a commissioner in another county, and a house across the street from his lit up, they had a 105-foot ladder, and no telling how many paid full-time, no volunteers in that county, house still went to the ground.
Yeah.
Hydrants in the front yard.
It's it's sad, but it's it's there's no it's you got to get on it and get a handle on it.
Right, so we've got two things for me.
Yes, sir.
Got to have the people, right?
Yes.
So that's recruitment, that's training, so we're sending qualified people out.
Yes, sir.
And then we have to have a mindset shift or paradigm shift that when that call goes out, hey, guys, we are trying to improve our ISO rating to improve the status of our fire protection, our rating here in the county, et cetera, et cetera. We need 27 people out every time. Well, 30, because it's three drivers and nine volunteers, right? And so that has to be a shift because I if we're getting handfuls, we're not getting the three handfuls or the six handfuls that we need to get 30 people out. So that's something that we'll have to start as, I don't want to call it a mandate, but the push, right? Because we can throw money at trucks, we can throw money at equipment, but if the people don't show up, we don't get the points.
Yes, sir. That's that's as in.
We're also down on volunteers too.
Yeah.
How we get a volunteer driver, incentivize, or whatever we do, but this 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 generation don't want to help.
The I've I've this month, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I've picked up three this month. It just in it it comes and goes.
Getting people interested is the hardest stuff. You got to start young, and even you pick up some older people. I mean, we picked up retired truck drivers before they'd come off the road. They're like, hey, I don't want to go in, but I got a Class A CDO or Class B or whatever they had, and they they're Johnny on the spot. They come and drive the truck, and that's a great, great thing. I could write up a whole page of volunteers that have started out as a walk-in volunteer, and they're now paid full-time EMTs, paramedics.
Oh, yeah.
And still volunteer here, and some have moved on, such as Brian Ward. He writes for some of the National Education Blanks, very, very smart guy. So you start out as a volunteer, and you can move up to a paid as in other counties or here or wherever it is. But you've got to start somewhere. Encouragement, recruitment, and return, you know, retention is very important.
So the teacher in me says, go to the elementary school, right? Bring the fire trucks. You know, I got interested in fire engines when I was a little kid because the fire truck showed up at school. And I got to get on the fire truck, and I remember wearing the hat and putting on the boots, right? And that's where it starts, and I don't know the other things you do beyond that. Middle school, sort of same way, and then by the time I get to high school, I can work the gear. I may be able to use the apparatus a little bit, and we intentionally program those three or four key touches in, and then we bring them out on a training, couple of training nights, you know, like y'all did me. And then when they are eligible to get into a pathway, if the pathway exists, now they're in the pathway and they're partnering and going out in those experiences. And this is a long-term process, right? Because we're not going to get volunteers overnight. But if I start this elementary, middle, high school program now, three to five years, you've got that pipeline of stable folks that are coming through. And maybe we grow through the grant and some additional funding into halfway-funded, full-time fire department. And we actually have a place for them to go, so they don't need to just get trained here and go to another county. So to me, that's a long-term approach that solves a bigger problem that's not just about getting points, but about making sure you and we have the right people on the ground and enough people on the ground to support the fire.
Out of the three that I've picked up this month, two of those were the ROTC. And they came to me, the lieutenant colonel, the the guy that's in charge of it over there. Anyway, he called me and says, you got something for our guys to do, projects. Said, yes, send them, send it to me. You know, I'm not going to have them out washing cars and doing this, or you know what I'm saying. They hop in the car with me, sign a release, and we go. And these are the two that I picked up, is show them what we do, why we do it, and how we do it, and take a little time with people. And it it goes a long way, and I was surprised to get those guys to come back. They came in. Well, one guy came twice, and the other guy came in three times. And both of them, I didn't even know these kids. They sent me their graduation things, and I sent them gifts and stuff like that, and and they're they're gonna come on with us.
Is there is there an openness, willingness, and then the opportunity to create on your end? And then we talked to the sheriff about having that fire department that is supported through the sheriff's department. I mean, we know we have a prison system that has fire departments. So can we?
Very effective.
Yes, can we leverage that?
That's a I I think you can only do that on a state level. Prison.
Gotcha.
The state of Georgia. You don't know, I have questioned it because Americas. Macon County. There's another one down towards Savannah that they have a like a 15 or 20 inmates that are actually, they can't be certified firefighters, but they are they go through the motions. They can't hold a license because they're convicted felons, but you're talking about knocking fire and ready to work and ready to wash hoes and whatever else to do, they do it. And you don't hear no griping. And they get to work, they get it done. But that's a that's a long one.
It's super long, but you know, we pay taxes, we're providing food, three hots and cot. I'm just saying, if the governor is open and our legislative contingency is open, I'd say what's good for the state is good for the county.
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, I think years ago, they had inmate firefighters that jib-stick in Forsyth, but I don't think they go out, I don't think they leave the property now or something.
Yeah, there's something that happened there, and they changed the, yeah, it's.
There was a lot of, I was trained there, and I remember crossing paths or seeing them in the station and whatnot. It was
Don, do we?
I don't know. That wouldn't work with the situation here with the sheriff.
Sorry.
Do we actively have recruitment fairs and stuff like that? Reason I ask is I, in my new position, that a lot of it is recruitment fairs for all operations departments in B F, which is like 10 departments, so and we're always looking for school nutrition bus drivers, you know, maintenance guys and all that kind of stuff. So it's not a one-size-fits-all recruitment fair. But what we do is each department has a flyer made up, and every time we have, whether it's graduation, whether it's new teacher orientation, whether it's student, whether it's backpack giveaways, whether it's food drives or whatever, we have the tables out there with these recruitment fair flyers on them. And then we have them, you know, six, eight times a year at different times, and just have recruitment fair, and you have a table with all your stuff on it.
Right.
I'm thinking about that. Like Dan said, get into the schools. They they love that and and let the kids realize that how cool the trucks are, especially with these new trucks. And another thing is invite, you know, challenge the volunteers now to bring a friend to a training day to have them come see what it what it's about. Just because I think, like you said, the two guys that came that they came to you, those might have been ones that you could have found, you know, if you'd invited them to 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 some training or something, and they were like, man, this is pretty cool, and this kind of fits with what we do already. It may be an opportunity, even if we get, you know, five or 10 people out over the year, we're, you know, I think it's a it's a benefit.
Our biggest our biggest things that that where our recruitment comes in at is is our local dinners like like Station One does spaghetti dinners. Station Eight does barbecue. Station Five does barbecue. Station 10 and 2 does Boston Butts. And others do like fish tournaments, fishing tournaments, bass tournaments, all that, that kind of thing. Those are our biggest draws. We get hit with a few people that are questioning about doing it, you know, doing what we do, what exactly what y'all do and why y'all do it. You know, this, you know, after doing this, I just I'm reaching my 15th year now, and that's hard to believe. But from day one, I wanted to do something with this ISO rating, and and I wasn't going to stop. We were the level eight there when I when I came in. And it took me a minute to to grasp a hold of points and this and that and this and that. And but after years gone by, years gone by, I had the big vision. People say I'm a dreamer and say all they want to say. Maybe I'm a dreamer. Travis Douglas is wearing me out. You don't think something's wrong, do you?
Just a, John, what's the minimum age to train to be a fighter?
It's all you. I'm in the meeting.
18 is pretty much what you need to be to you know, I guess you could have cadet at a younger age, but they're not, they will not see live fire. It's strictly cold areas.
Yeah. Pathway though, the EMT pathway, is that just for GABY lands or fire as well?
Having somebody's EMT or paramedic is a bonus, but I think you have to be at 18 to start on that process.
I bet.
But I'm not, I don't, that's a medical licensing question.
So if we did something crazy and said, all right, we're gonna have firefighter development, right, and let's say, call it 16, right, you shadow and you can't go out to fires, but we get you into the paperwork and the training part of it, right?
It's a cadet, it would be set up as a cadet program. They're strictly cold areas. They don't touch fire.
Yep. And summers are great, in my opinion, because, you know, kids got way more hours available if they're not working.
Oh, yeah.
You got an intensive sort of boot camp getting them ready, and those kids that are 17, turning 18 now, next year, they can go live, and they're already in the system, right?
But then they could start on their actual training, because in the fire training, you're going to touch, you know, live fire.
So you got two-year cadet program, intensive summers, and then during the school year, much, much lighter, but we have a huge opportunity, I think, in our county because of the relationships and the people that we have to sort of leverage that.
I agree with that.
There are people in the county, they just haven't been tapped yet. They don't know. If you if you walk out here on the stand out in front of, let's just say, one of our grocery stores or hardware stores or something, and you ask people two questions. Well, main one main question, do we have a full-time or volunteer fire department? They're gonna tell you, we have a full-time department. They do not.
No doubt.
Five, I would say.
It's very high.
Nine out of 10 people would say, we have a full-time fire department. They don't know. So it's an education factor to the community. Hey, we have primarily a.
Hey, we have primarily a volunteer fire department. We need your help. And some people may only just go show up, be a support personnel, check blood pressures, just give somebody a bottle of water. There's plenty of jobs for everybody. Some people want to fight the hot stuff, and that's great.
This was my vision. After all these years and recruiting and even when I was on the ambulance for 30 years, it was continuous. You're always looking for that person, persons. And you know them when you see them. There's no doubt you know when you see them. But I always thought that by now, we would have had a headquarters station. This doesn't have anything to do, you guys have given me every tool possible to make things good happen. And I appreciate it. You know, with that being said, I was thinking that the times that we had pinged people and got interested people to, is when we approached them and they were around in our environment. It was like, I think this, what people say is kind of a brother-sister deal. You know, you're kind of around, you're close to this guy, you're close to this girl, you're close to these people, these are your brothers and sisters. But the thing that I dreamed about at the end of my career is having something every quarter, if we had a real fire hall, okay? A place that would seat 100 people and have breakfast and invite these folks, whether it was $5 for all you could eat, whatever, get anybody you could in there. And they see how you guys, we got us guys, work together and play with one another, kid with one another. But that's always been a, that was always something I always thought about, that it would work and we would want, I think people would come and hang around more to see something like that and be a part of something like that. If you're feeding all these folks and you're doing this and doing that, I want to be a part of that. It's as simple as it is. It's simple, but it's that matrix of touching that person to come over and join us. That was always my thing. I guess it's the way I grew up in a fire hall. And that's the way I saw it. It was like, I don't know if it was every month, it seemed like it was every month. There may have been more than that. As a child, I was going to eat hamburgers and hot dogs at the fire hall and I never left the station until I moved to Georgia. So, but there's things can be done. Sam, you're right. These things, we are in the high school, we are in the VOTC. I can't, honestly, we've been to one or two of the career days for the middle school. I just, I'm not sure how much more. We've even done it a few times at the fair. And it never worked out. It's always being with one another and a different fellowship that involved food. And I don't know why it touches people, but it does. I'm all about having a big crowd. But I've never seen it this low as far as, it's scary. I would lay awake at night and wonder when that night is going to be. It's going to not only me, the only one out there, or another volunteer while I'm out of town, it's just them. But thank God, we've got backup alerts for surrounding counties. But I want to do good with this ISO. And it doesn't, you know, I know I'm closing down my career. But it don't stop me from trying to get that four because I'd like to see us get that four, even if it doesn't really help us. We've moved good throughout the years. And I think we've moved in the right direction. We can't stop now. We're getting more water. We're getting more trucks. We got reserve trucks, only half a point, but it doesn't matter. It's a half a point, it's a half a point. I just stay on top of it and I'm going to kick it. But I would, Sam, just answering your question about the time, is if, probably if I was to alert, ISO would probably be the first of the year before they got to us. And I could call Bain in South Carolina and ring his bell. Y'all have met him, I know. Taught that class. Is that his name, Bain? What is his name?
Yeah, South Carolina.
Anyway, he's a southeast guy.
You got to draw on that. I'm trying to, I know what you're playing at.
Yeah, I can see his face. But I've only seen him in classes and stuff like that. I've taken every class that's been available for this ISO. And the Chiefs Association, the Fire Association has been good about it. Whenever they send seminars and stuff like that, there's always a pack of ISO, what's new in ISO. Hadn't been real much changes. I honestly, I think that there's been a little bit lenient nowadays. But still, when these people come through our doors, they're not looking at anything but what's expected, whether it's paid volunteer or whatever.
Can you do me a small favor?
Yes.
In the areas 561, 571, and 581, that's an opportunity for us to get 34 points. And we're currently getting 5.47. So to me, that's the greatest opportunity. I don't know how low-hanging any of that fruit is. And I know we're running short on time here.
What was the number, five thirty-something?
561, 571, and 581. There's an opportunity for 34 points. We're getting 5.47.
Yes. Well, here we go again with training.
Right. It's not just training, but it's company personnel and then deployment analysis. I don't know what that means. I don't know if you know what that means. But if there is a solution, and I don't want to make another work session, he might be able to just tell it to us at the next meeting, you know, via email. What do we need to do for those three categories, right? And how do we help you get there? Because it's 34 points.
I would add to that. Now, that's exactly what I was going to ask, except I was going to add all of them that are not within a point of each other. And I know there's not much for 432, 616, 631. But we do know that there's like credit for supply system. I think we need to look at what we've done since the last time we had an ISO. I mean, we know we've run water down Sand Creek Trail. We're now running it all the way down Henderson, I mean, Graham Road. We've already got the money allocated for the rest of Henderson Road area, 49 area, and we're already putting stuff out in bid. So if it's going to be six or eight months before they get here, we'll have some pipes in the ground that may work.
Yeah.
But the things that have been done since this last ISO, that, as well as, you know, inspections and flow testing, you know, credit for company personnel. So we know we have, we know we've got three full-timers that we didn't have then, right?
Well, they're part-time, right, yeah. But the full-timers are going to be around the clock.
Right. But we got nine part-times.
Right.
So that's three full-times, right? So we got three full-time staff members that we didn't have when we did ISO last time.
I'm going to address everything that's more than five points, worth five points. It's all the ones that you said. I want to, I want to say something real quick. The, all right, talking about putting water in designated places, let's say Graham Road. The Graham Road area, just say that. That's a good place where I lived for 17, 18 years. They get a rating of five, five Y, okay? That's where that Y comes in. There's no plugs. You see what I'm saying? The only change that would be made right there is when they get the water, it would be, it would be a solid five instead of a five Y.
So Sand Creek Trail has hydrants.
Yes, right.
And as we go, we're putting in hydrants as we put in. So that takes care of that.
Takes care of it. I know, I look at certain insurance things, they rate, if you don't have a hydrant present, you get a seven.
Right.
If you're rated a seven, actually.
It can go up to a nan if they want to, yes.
Because I know, like where my mother lives, she has a five insurance rating on her house.
Where's she live at?
Like where I live, no hydrants, I get a seven.
Yeah.
So that's where I talk about the water system expansion. You know, certain areas of the county, they're getting lines, getting the hydrants, they're going to benefit. But we've got to, and I know it's a major financial burden to expand the water system, but it's a long, long-range plan for everybody to see the benefits of the lower ISO ratings.
I'll have those for you commissioners.
Sorry, Chairman.
It's community outreach that starts there. We've got to, community outreach.
That works, the work coming in, everybody, everybody's sitting here on their phone these days.
Just look in the restaurants. Nobody's talking to anybody. Everybody's doing this right here.
We ain't got anybody working social media, you know, promoting volunteers. We need to. You got, you got one individual that I talked to a while back, you'll know the problem with him. He was thinking about quitting because he said he didn't feel like he could do anything. He doesn't know what to talk about. He said, I don't feel like I'm in a position to do it a lot. And I said, you don't realize that you're just as important out there as anybody on that. You know.
I don't know who that is.
There's something for everybody.
Yes, there's something for everybody, whether it's just the support.
Yeah, little Dave talking about.
Oh, yes.
I said, little Dave.
I gave him a camera.
I said, do you not give up your, I just feel like I'm not doing.
No, I gave him, I gave him.
You're out there, you're out there giving.
They just need that extra, just need that extra push to get them involved, change.
Oh, yeah. Actually, he went through his support class and passed the support class. And now he's actually eligible for retirement. So I gave him a camera, told him to stay out of the hot zone. But I wanted pictures of everything, just not patients and stuff like that and grieving people, but on the fire ground. And it's, some of it's come back when I've done investigations and stuff like that.
Right.
It came out.
Pictures worth a thousand words on some scenes.
Yeah.
Can, can, so, Don, you can, you can give us what we can do to get these, what you need from us to get them done, but if you can, get a.
What I'm going to do.
Yeah, what is our plan? What is our game plan to get there?
Got you. Can I address one other thing while we're sitting here? With the broken lines and stuff like that? Code Red is here for any time you need it.
Can we do that?
Absolutely, yes. I'll give you a password and you can do what you want to do with it. But we've got the first 1,000 minutes I purchase every year, okay? Well, 1,100 to be exact, okay? 1,100. After that, they charge 50 cents a minute. But now, a cycle of 100 calls goes out every six seconds. So that means that minute is going to get plenty of people for 50 cents. So it's yours, it belongs to the county, and it belongs to the taxpayers. I've had it for almost 15 years now and it's worth it.
How do we need to see how to roll?
It's easy. You can put just a little area, you can put a big area, you can page everybody. There's over 6,000 people in the database.
So is it just?
It's easy, brother. If I can do it, you can do it. What you're doing on Facebook and all is way far better than I can do, unless you've got somebody doing it for you.
And so what he's talking about is the break we had at River North.
Yeah.
So it was a late-night break. They got it fixed at 10, 11 o'clock at night. And Brandon sent all the information to the news media and put it on Facebook. But we still had some calls from folks at River North because they didn't see anything from Jones County Board of Commissioners or from our, when they looked on our, the River North Association sent out an email or blast everybody and said, you know, there's a water bowl advisory. And they looked on the website, Jones County website, and we didn't have anything about a water bowl. But we, he had 13, 24, 41, all of them had it at 10:17 that night that it came on, put it out there. So we just, it being 12 o'clock on a Friday night, we didn't have anybody to update our website at midnight on a Friday. And they were expecting it at 6 o'clock on Saturday morning. So we talked about it and that was one of the things we talked about, was there a way to have an app or the Code Red? And I know I get the Code Red from B of N Jones, and it really works well. And I know we're always getting pushback that, well, I didn't have Code Red. Well, at some point, we're going to have to say, well, then you need to download Code Red because we put it in the newspaper, we put it in, you know, we put it on Facebook and we put it on Code Red. Unless you want us to just come knock on your door and tell you to do it, that's the, you know, we don't have any other options.
Right.
And it is something that we have to get out as a help issue. We've got to get out immediately to everybody in that area.
Exactly.
I think as long as we're doing everything we can do, then we can throw it off a little bit of the complaint systems. But nobody complained that it was, the whole place was down at 9 o'clock and back up and running at 10:17. Nobody said anything about that.
Really? Go back that quick?
On the holiday weekend that they were, that they were out there.
We had two at the same time.
I know you were getting pounded, man. I know you was. And I just, I kind of feel for you. I want to reach for the phone and, or go for the, and activate it, but I don't know how you feel and how far you want to go with it.
I might, definitely might look at it.
Yeah.
It's another resource.
It's, it's.
I use every one that I have available.
I don't care what you do with it, man. Really, if you could, if it could better all of us.
I'll see you later on this week, get some information on it.
And if we're not using Code Red because that costs per transaction, if there's an app that can be leveraged, something like a Constant Contact, it goes out in the mail with a QR, they scan it, and then you can have direct communication with everybody that's on the system, right?
That's pretty cool.
There's an app out there too that's completely separate. It's a county-wide app that our building software uses that has, it's a great resource, I feel like, that you can push, send push notifications out to everybody that has the app.
That's perfect.
And it's Parks and Rec, EMA, Fire Department, I mean, Water, Parks and Rec. You can sign up for baseball on the app. You can pay your water bill on the app. You can contact your commissioners, have all y'all's faces, put it in y'all's emails.
Oh, yeah.
Keys up now.
It's pretty nice.
I want that available.
All right.
That may be an option if y'all want to explore that. We can set up the demos on.
Yeah. I know the Sheriff's Department's got one that's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is.
But.
It ties all the bases together.
You've got to have somebody's input all that stuff, do it, man.
Yeah, he's got a good guy that's in there doing it. He called me earlier this week. I'm the, I'm the July Person of the Month. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
We've got five minutes. Twenty-seven.
I think we take a five-minute break. Is this good? Is this good?
Much to the joint, Chairman.
Second.
Yes, sir.